All or any portion of the meeting, I would appreciate it now. Great, seeing none. The next thing, I'd just like to say a couple of procedural things, two or three procedural things. One, this is an audio-only meeting. I know sometimes folks join by video. Board of Selectmen has been holding their meetings audio-only. The host has the control to mute or unmute you. So when the public comment period comes during this meeting, if you'd like to speak, if you could use the raised hand function on the side of the Zoom screen, I will recognize you. And the host for the meeting, who's the Assistant Town Administrator, Michelle Montseger, will unmute you. You know, if you've done this before, sometimes it takes a couple of minutes. So please, you know, bear with us as we try to recognize you, but we will. This agenda really has just one item on it that will be considered in public, and that is the proclamation for the LGBTQ+ Pride Month proclamation that we will consider as a board, and then we will move into executive session. So if you've joined us before, you know that the format for the Board of Selectmen meeting typically includes a period of time in the meeting where the board itself will consider the item on the agenda, will ask some questions, make some comments, and then we will open it up to the public for comments and questions as well. So bear with us as we proceed. So I guess maybe I'll kind of introduce the topic, and then Joe and Mary, I'll turn to you for questions or comments. So, you know, as many of you know on the line, we were approached to fly the pride flag at Town Hall as part of the Hangham Pride Project, which has been a very successful effort, I think, to promote awareness and support for the LGBTQ+ population, particularly LGBTQ+ youth in Hangham. And, you know, we get lots of requests for lots of things. And so this request, like anything else, was, okay, well, how do we go about it? What are the steps to take? And what might be the risks involved in undertaking, you know, this particular request? And, you know, I think, I think that, you know, in some ways, you think to yourself, well, it should be a no-brainer. You know, this is a protected class of individuals under Massachusetts law, and we have this unbelievable group in Hangham who has taken ownership and has really, I think, spread the word widely about the importance of recognizing LGBTQ+ citizens. And the issue is, you know, as we evaluated it, the issue is that speech by the state, and in this case, the town is the state, government speech is different than my speech or your speech. And so while I have a flag and display a flag, I'm not the state. And when the state speaks, there are, among other things, constitutional, I guess, constitutional ramifications to when the state decides to speak on things. And, you know, it's been a long, long time since I've sat in a constitutional law classroom, and I don't pretend to be an expert. I did pay attention a little bit. And one of the important constitutional protections that arises in the context of state speech is the equal protection clause. And that essentially says, hey, state, if you recognize certain speech, or you speak in a certain way, and I want to speak on the other side of that issue, or on a different issue, you can't distinguish then against how you're going to speak with respect to similarly situated citizens in a way that's arbitrary, right? So you have to treat basically, you got to treat everybody the same. So I think the concern is that with, absent a policy or a long-established practice, which we don't have, of flying other than the constitutionally mandated and statutorily mandated flags, the flag of the Commonwealth and the flag of the United States, absent a practice of or a policy relating to other visual displays, the town has risk associated with flying this particular flag at this particular time. And so I think, I think in order to move forward and make sure that everybody understands where their town stands with respect to this issue, Joe and Mary and I, through Tom Mayo, our Town Administrator, and Michelle Montseger, I think crafted a proclamation of very strong and unambiguous language that wholly supports the recognition of, the support for, and the, I think, the importance of making a statement in respect of LGBTQ+ citizens. So that's where we are today. And I guess I would turn it over to Joe, if you would like to make any remarks at this point.
I would, but I would just ask the chair whether or not we want to have counsel weigh in in terms of the risks that you just spoke about and how we should best manage those risks while at the same time expressing our support for LGBTQ events and really commemorating Pride Month. But I know that our actions are guided, in this event specifically, by Town Council, and it would help me to hear from Town Council on the topic.
Certainly, Joe, is there a question in there, or you just want John to kind of outline?
I think the question is, we are, we have considered whether or not it would be appropriate to have the pride flag flown at Town Hall. And I think you summarized your understanding of what the risks are, but I'd like to hear from Town Council what those risks are so that we can make a judgment as to the best way to move forward.
I'm certainly happy to do that. And I guess I, you know, to the extent it's still on the table to have a visual display of the flag at Town Hall, I'm certainly happy to have that conversation. Is that what you're indicating, Joe?
No, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm satisfied, having had my own discussion, that we need to move forward with the proclamation. And I think it's, you know, it's an important situation that we acknowledge and that we demonstrate our support of gay, straight, bisexual, transgender. The specific introduction that you gave to this discussion was that there was the request about the flag, and I just wanted to make sure that that issue has now been fully addressed by council.
Sure. John, would you mind responding to Joe's question?
Sure, sure, happy to do it. So putting aside the type of flag for a moment, just as a general rule, the town's current policy is that those flag poles in front of Town Hall are used for official flags and military flags. So to be clear, the town is under no legal obligation to expand the use of those flag poles to any outside private group. That would be a decision the town would have to make. If the town chooses to keep it as is and keep the official flags as the only flags, then the town is on solid legal ground, and there's no obligation that it open it up to any outside groups. If we decide to go down that road and open it up to outside groups, then I would recommend that we have some written policy as to how we're going to process those requests and make a determination as to which flags would be approved and which flags would be denied. And in those cases, the town would have to be prepared to defend any legal challenge to any group that requests to put a flag up but has denied that request. And the most recent example of that is that City of Boston case that I had sent around to each of the members of the board, where the City of Boston allowed certain flags to go up but then denied a particular flag. In this case, it was a religious flag. And they were sued in U.S. District Court in Boston, and had spent about three years defending that suit, and that suit is currently on appeal in the First Circuit Court of Appeals. So we don't know what the final outcome of that case will be, but it's an example of, once you open those flag poles, there is a risk of litigation, and there's a risk of having to incur the expense of defending it. And in Boston's case, they're all the way up to the First Circuit Court of Appeals, and who knows where they'll be after that. It could be the U.S. Supreme Court. And that case hasn't been finally decided. So without the benefit of a final decision in that case, you know, at this point, we're really not sure what the final rule is going to be, at least in the First Circuit. So I think that is the risk. I think as it presently stands, we're not at risk of litigation. If we open it up, then there's a potential for litigation and the cost of defending it.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments, Joe?
Yes. So I think LGBTQ Pride Month is an important time to talk about struggles to achieve equality and justice in all aspects of our lives. And I think it's important that we move forward with a proclamation to recognize Pride Month. No other questions or comments.
Great, thanks, Joe. Mary, questions or comments?
You know, thank you. I, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody who's joining this call and people who have reached out to the board in different ways to lend their voice to this conversation. Karen, you haven't had a chance to read the proclamation yet, and I might ask that we do that shortly, because I think that for me, and I think for you and Joe, that there are a lot of important concepts and words in the proclamation that we think are significant. And, you know, I think, you know, so far, we've been talking a little bit about what the board is not prepared to do. But in that, I don't want to lose sight of what the board is prepared to do, because we don't make proclamations all that often. In my years on the board, I think I can only remember two. And that's because we save them for significant events. And I think we all believe that this is a significant event. And, you know, consistent with proclamations that we've made before, you know, I think we're each making a personal commitment that in carrying out our obligations to the town, that we are going to live up to the principles that are contained in that proclamation. I think that, you know, you and Joe and John Coughlin have spoken about the potential legal implications, and I would just add two things. You know, the first one for me with respect to legal consideration, you know, that's not just a cost issue, it's a time issue. Regardless of whether or not litigation has merit, the town has a responsibility and a requirement to respond. We have to gather information for depositions. We have to respond to record requests. Sometimes people are involved. And it's been my experience while serving on the board that in our, you know, in our office of four people in the selectmen's office, I would say we at least spend one full-time person all the time dealing with litigation and associated matters. And, you know, if we're gathering documents for litigation, we're not working on other important things. And so to me, there's both a financial cost and a cost in terms of carrying out responsibilities that people want us to do. I'd say one other thing, which is that, you know, I think in my experience, when there are matters of public interest, and certainly this is one of them, it's been my experience that without kind of a policy and some sort of a public process behind it, the decision gets challenged. And what I would really hate to see is that, you know, we have people pushing back on a decision the board makes that's viewed as lack of support for the initiative, in this case, the Pride Initiative. And I really just don't want to see that happen for a lot of different reasons. So I would close by maybe, you know, asking if, when you think it's the appropriate time, you could please share the proclamation that we've thoughtfully put together for, you know, for people who are participating in this call. And, you know, I support the words, I support the spirit behind it, and I commit to upholding it.
Thanks, Mary. Sure, I can read the proclamation, and then we can open it up for questions and comments from the public. I will say a couple of things about that procedurally, and that is that, and it's, you know, I know this is a little artificial because we're, you know, on a phone line, but, you know, if we're at Town Hall, and because this is a Board of Selectmen meeting, the questions should come to me as the chair, and then I'll direct them to, you know, to the appropriate person to respond to your question. And, you know, I also think that, as we all know, it's an important hallmark of our civic life here in Hangham to be collegial and respectful. And I would anticipate that that's how we're all going to conduct ourselves this afternoon. So let me read the proclamation, and then we'll open it up for comments and questions. So Hangham Board of Selectmen, lesbian, gay, bi, trans, queer, questioning plus, Pride Month proclamation. Whereas Hangham is a community that values diversity and inclusion, and is committed to equal rights and opportunities for all its residents. And whereas Hangham recognizes the important contributions of its LGBTQ+ residents to the town's history, culture, economy, and civic life. And whereas June 28, 2020 marks the 51st anniversary of the Stonewall riots, an event that gave rise to the beginning of the gay rights movement in the United States. And whereas June is now designated across the country and in the Commonwealth as Pride Month. And whereas we celebrate the accomplishments of the LGBTQ+ community towards securing important rights and freedoms, often through struggle and adversity. And whereas we remain vigilant against continued oppression and discrimination against the LGBTQ+ community and against any new political efforts to overturn these accomplishments. And whereas we affirm our support for our LGBTQ+ residents, including our students and our employees, vendors and visitors, and stand with them to protect their civil rights and ability to live openly without fear. And whereas we congratulate the members of the Hangham Pride Project for their efforts to increase LGBTQ+ visibility and to support LGBTQ+ citizens, particularly our LGBTQ+ youth, through the distribution of over 700 pride flags that are flying across Hangham. And whereas we acknowledge the important efforts of the Hangham School Committee, the school department leadership, teachers and staff, to support our LGBTQ+ students and to help all students meet core educational competencies that prioritize social, emotional learning, health and safety, and respect for others. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hangham, do hereby proclaim June 2020 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Voted this fourth day of June 2020, Karen A. Johnson, Mary M. Power, Joseph M. Fisher. So that is the statement. And as Mary indicated, we all carefully, I think, reflected on how important our words are, particularly in the days we live in today. And, you know, I think this is a very important statement of where the town stands with respect to LGBTQ+ rights. So I will now open it up to the public for comment or questions. And I see Alyssa Porter, your hands raised. Michelle, can you unmute Alyssa?
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can, Alyssa, thank you.
So I just wanted to make a clarification, just so we know moving forward. There was the statement that regardless of the legal costs, the time involved for employees at Town Hall, dealing with legal issues is extraordinarily excessive when there's some legal paperwork to pull out, blah, blah, blah. So it's kind of like a time stop. Sorry, it's clearly at my door. My question is, if we had a cadre of pro bono lawyers ready to fight any legal action against the town in support of the pride flag being up, because of the time that is taken away from employees of town, would this not be supported in an article that we tried to get through to a town meeting for vote?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't, I don't know exactly what form an article at a town meeting would take, but where...
To get on a warrant, to get, for this to ever be put up for vote by the town, because you said it would be more impactful if there was a policy and the whole town voted on it as opposed to being a Board of Selectmen decision, just that it would be better legally to have something where the whole town voted and that there was a policy behind it. I'm just trying to clarify that if we had some free representation, legal representation willing to take this on by a variety of lawyers, would that ever be a beneficial thing, or is it still not an impactful assistance by having lawyers instead of having to pay Town Council if you had free lawyers to help with any legal battles surrounding the flag?
Yeah, no, and I guess, I've heard this town meeting thing a couple of times. I'm not exactly sure where it's coming from. I mean, I think, I think kind of the care and custody and control of town property is actually statutorily fixed with the Board of Selectmen, and our lawyer is on the phone, so he could respond to that if I'm on thin ice here, so...
Karen, I can barely hear you.
Okay. I think this is a policy that the Board of Selectmen would enact, and we would do so, you know, we would do so after careful research, and it would be part of a public process, you know, that the board could choose to undertake. As John Coughlin said earlier, you know, the current practice anyway is to fly only the flags that you've seen on those poles, which are the constitutional flags as well as flags related to our veterans and police. So I don't know that this is a town meeting consideration. I think it falls within the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. I do think you're right, though, that in considering, if the board were to move forward and consider to craft a policy, you know, one set of resources might be the numbers of nonprofit groups that deal with this issue, you know, on a regular basis. So I think you're right, and I think the town has a longstanding practice of enlisting the help of volunteers, whether it's, you know, volunteer legal counsel that would sign the town on as an actual client, or, you know, working with members of the community that have particular expertise to help, to help the town develop a policy. But that, you know, I think that that's the next step, and I think you're absolutely right. There are resources out there that the town could gather to continue to consider, you know, how best to show support for not only LGBTQ+ citizens, but, you know, in general. It would have to be a policy that applies to the flag poles as a whole. Christina O'Connor.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you so much. I just had a couple of related questions. And one, I was wondering, what are the flags that fly at Town Hall? I know you mentioned official flags and military flags, and I was just wondering if that means the United States and the Commonwealth flag plus, like POW/MIA flag, or if there are other flags? And if so, what was the process that we followed to get those other flags to fly? I guess I just wanted to clarify, like, what's there now and how those came to be?
Yeah, good question. And I see Keith German's on the line, so I may turn to Keith in a minute here to delineate the flags that have flown on those flag poles. But my understanding is that it is the flag of the United States of America, the flag of the Commonwealth, the POW/MIA flag. And then there was a flag that flew in memory of the veterans of World War I, I think, Keith, as well as the memorial, the Peace Officers Memorial Day flag, which is a flag that memorializes police and public safety officials who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And I think that there was another veterans-related flag. So I think the process there has been that those functions are related to services that we provide at Town Hall and sort of within the ambit of government. And not, and so I guess to respond directly to your question, there's been no, there's been no third-party flag, no flag outside of the kind of Hangham municipal government service group that has flown on those poles, to my knowledge.
Okay, and can I follow up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Karen. Karen, Keith German, let me just clarify your position before you, before she sends in another question, because I just want to make sure that, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
I just want to make sure that, so constitutionally, municipal building must have the flag of the United States. And now after several, it was about a few months ago, several months ago, the president enacted an executive order that said while flying that flag, you will fly the POW. It used to be for only holidays, certain holidays, so you will fly that now. So that flag pole would be US and the black POW/MIA. On the pole to the left, as you're looking out the boardroom window, the governor proclaims that you shall fly the flag of the Commonwealth at every main administration building within the town. So you're required to have the flag of the Commonwealth posted. And traditionally, historically, we've always flown the Town of Hangham flag under that, but again, with no real policy until last year, which our policy stated that if a municipal employee, whether he was a, whether he or she was a retiree and/or a killed in the line of duty, which we've had a few of those as well, meaning they were actively on the rolls and an active employee died from an injury, illness, or a disease, we would then lower that flag, the red Hangham flag, to half-staffed. So that's the only known existing policy on those. The World War I, you are correct, when it was a national referendum to celebrate the centennial of World War I, a national committee was formed in Washington, state committees were formed, and then they reached out to each municipality, asking if they'd like to be part of the national role, where Hangham was added to one of the communities on the national role representing. If we flew that flag for two years, so from November 11, 2017 until November 11, 2019, I petitioned the Board of Selectmen, and I'm sure you can remember, I came before you all, probably not Joe, but I think he was on zoning then, but to ask if we could be part of that. Traditionally, before I write a memo, before Police Week, National Peace Officers Memorial Week, I write a memo to ask for you to allow me to fly the flag for the week of Police Week, which is a national observance. And the other final national observance is Memorial Day. We memorialize those soldiers, sailors, and the Marines by flying. Now, this year, we used to fly a, we, we used to fly a flag that was considered what they call the Blue Star Banner, and it says, "We support our military," or something like that. We have since moved to a new flag. There's a new initiative out there now. It's a gold star flag to remember all of those families who've lost loved ones in the line of duty from the revolution to today. So those are the, that's kind of how we've been operating. I just want to make sure everybody was aware of what was being flown and why.
Thanks, Keith, that was great, great summary.
Sorry, can I ask the last follow-up related to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, and thank you, Keith. So my last question is around, you mentioned that groups have, you know, that this is a group approaching you to ask you to fly the flag? And I was just wondering if there is a difference between a group approaching the Board of Selectmen to ask them to fly the flag and the Board of Selectmen doing so of their own accord without being asked to by a group? And that is, in this situation, or in any situation, I guess, I just, I'm just asking generally. Thank you.
I mean, I'm not sure I've got a response to that last question. I don't know if John, you know, I think that, yeah, I don't have a response to that last question. If John Coughlin wants to step in.
Yeah, my understanding was this particular instance was a request from an outside group, and that's, you know, that was the information that I was provided, and that's the way that I looked at it, you know, whether the town would be in a position of going out and purchasing its own flags on occasion and trying to fly those on its own. I'd have to look into that, but that wasn't the way the issue was presented for this instance.
Right, I guess I'm not fully understanding your question. So, you know, I think, I think the flags that Keith described came through requests
the flags that Keith described came through requests from, from, you know, from departments and service, and related to services that we, we provide as a municipality.
Okay, so, yeah, so I guess.
Can I finish, Christina, if you don't mind?
Sure.
And so, and so those are the only requests that have, that in my mind have ever been made, and only one has been made while I've been on the Board of Selectmen.
Sorry, and I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought you were at the end of a sentence. Zoom is, is challenging that way. So I guess just to clarify what the question is, is could the, could the Board of Selectmen choose without a request from an outside group to fly a particular flag?
Yes, yes. I mean, I think, I think we have the custody and control of the buildings and attributes to those buildings in the Town of Hingham.
Okay.
Again, I'd look to my legal counsel to tell me otherwise, but yes.
I just wanted to jump in here, you know. I, I appreciate the question. I think on matters like this, which we've, you know, we know one thing for sure, and this is a matter with great public interest. I, I don't, I don't think it would be appropriate or responsible of a Board of Selectmen to make a unilateral decision like that without, you know, without some sort of a public process behind it. And in fact, if, if the board wanted to go that route, it would have to do it in a public meeting where there's opportunity for public comment, et cetera. I, again, think that i- in this town, and I know to some it feels, it feels difficult and sometimes bureaucratic, people like to participate in decisions, and I think particularly ones of significant public interest, such as this.
Yeah, and I guess, Mary, I was just, I was responding kind of generically, but I completely agree with you. I think if, if, in particular, you know, again, and I, I think we do draw the line in terms of what, what's central to the town government, and then groups outside town government making a request. I think there is a delineation there. And with respect to that, I think we would need a policy in place, coming back to what Joe Fisher and John talked about at the, at the top of the meeting, which is, you know, to make sure that we all understand what the expectations are for the flag polls, and that the public has been informed and part of that process, and then we would consider requests in keeping with that, in keeping with that policy. Any, anything further, Christina?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Alyssa, I saw your hand again. Are you, do you, do you want to be recognized, or are you all set?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just wanted to just get an understanding. So the, it was the Peace Officer flag that was requested by an outside group, but that is somehow central to town government? That was the flag that went up?
The Peace Officer flag, the request was made, I believe, through Keith German, and it's, it's part of a memorial program that we, we, we recognize annually with the Police Department. So it relates directly to our, our Police Department. So it's not a, it was not an outside group.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was it the Blue Star and the Gold Star, the Gold Star banner and the Gold Star flag that he was referencing that was put up that needed to be requested?
Like, I, he, I mean, he came, he came before us and asked, yeah. And again, I, it came through Veterans, our Veterans Service Office.
So that falls under the governmental flag category? We're just trying to get it like a clear, clear understanding.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anything further? Mr. Buckley?
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to update you on my petition. I remember last time during the selection meeting, a couple of days ago, I mentioned that I made a petition for this, which had, at that time, I think, 3,600 signatures. I wanted to let you know that now the petition is nearing 5, 5,600 signatures, if that influences your decision at all.
I mean, you know, I, I applaud you, and, you know, this is, and, and frankly, I'm just so, I'm gratified that people are stepping up and signing up and showing support for LGBTQ plus citizens. You know, this, I don't have to tell you, this is not, this isn't an easy town, right? And I, I experienced this issue when I first, when I ran for the Board of Selectmen in 2017, when I had a number of my gay friends indicate that they didn't think they could campaign for me because, because, you know, they weren't wanted in Hingham. And, you know, that cut me to the core, because I love this town, and I don't think that's true. And I think what you're telling me with this petition is, that is not true. And, and so the, the Work of the Pride Project is an important signal to our neighbors and our friends and our coworkers, that this is, this, this is where the values of the town stand. And I think the proclamation that I read also is undeniably direct in terms of where the values of government stand with respect to this issue. I, I think what I was trying to say at the beginning of the meeting was, there is a, there's a complexity that attaches itself to government speech, which flying of the flag is government speech, that, that, that creates levels of risk that the municipality's got to evaluate, and that, you know, as strongly as I feel about this issue, I think that to be, I think that to do this in the absence of a policy would be irresponsible. So I, I, in no way say that to diminish the numbers of people that are standing up for this issue. But I think at this date, we don't have the tools that we need to do this in the most responsible way for the town.
Okay. Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks for being here again. Who do we have? I think Galaxy Note 10, if you could state your name and address for the record, I'd like to recognize you next.
Yeah, hi, it's Katie McBride at 157 Central Street. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My question is, again, a clarification question. So if a government body asks you to fly a flag, then that would be acceptable? So I'm thinking the Cultural Council, which this would fall under the purview of, or Diversity Council, or whatever the name of it is, but I think it's Cultural Council, and that's a government body. So if they asked you to fly this flag, would that fall under a government asking you to fly a flag situation?
You know, Katie, I, I just, I, I, I don't know. I mean, and I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, so that, so that's like a possibility? I mean, the police asked you to fly a flag, so you did, right? So if we can get a government body to ask you to fly a flag, then that seems to be okay?
Well, I think there's two components to what we've done in the past. One is that it's a government body act, acting, and two is a flag that directly relates to a service that the town provides. So.
The Cultural Council does provide services for people to increase diversity and to be accepting, right? So that would fall under their purview.
I, I think that, I, I just think that, as I said to Mr. Buckley, I think in the absence of a more comprehensive policy than we have in place right now, we are, we, we are not in a position to fly the Pride flag. So I mean, you know, I suppose we could posit a number of hypotheticals where we think it might work. I think that, I think I've probably said all I can say on that point. I don't know whether John, or Joe, or Mary want to clarify that, but.
Yeah, Karen, I'll jump in. Sorry, I was having a little muting trouble. You know, my, in, in my discussions with council, and my discussions with the town administrator, who I know is also, you know, made some inquiries on our behalf, to the extent that we are flying governmental flags, that, that, that is the circumstance that we have in Hingham, and what council is telling us is that those governmental and military flags, you know, by, by limiting it to that, we, as he said, are, are out of risk, are not at risk. From my perspective, if, if a, a, you know, a committee in town, or somebody in town, asked us to fly a non-military or non-government flag, I think it's problematic for, for the reasons that you've mentioned. You know, I think that, you know, further, there's, you know, there's a lot of positing and questions, and these are some thoughtful questions. But again, what it just says to me is, we are nowhere near ready to be able to make a decision of this magnitude, because we haven't, we haven't done the due diligence necessary to make an informed decision. And, you know, first and foremost, you, Joe, and I, our responsibility is to protect the town, and we have to make sure that decisions we make do that, and that we understand all of the intended or unintended consequences. And, you know, I, I just don't think we're there on this one right now.
Katie, anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Libby, if you could state your name and address for the record? Michelle, do you see Libby?
I do. I've selected unmute. She's got to click it as well.
Okay.
Zoom technical difficulties.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, could you state your name and address?
370 Gardner Street, Hingham, Libby Lewicki. So how do we go about getting a more comprehensive policy, so that at the very least, we could be ready to fly it next year?
That's a great, I think, a great question, a great suggestion, and I would say that it would be something that the Board of Selectmen could take up, you know, in, in the coming months, as you suggest, to be prepared to address the issue, I think, more comprehensively for the town. So I think, you know, I, I'll be honest, right? I've got a couple, I've got a couple of weeks left, so it would be the new Board of Selectmen, or after the election on June 27th, would take up this issue, potentially.
And, and, and so if we could continue to help make that happen as, as citizens?
Yes, absolutely.
As a family with a mortgage and a kid, we've been thinking about life insurance for a few months.
Years.
Years.
Yeah, I think it's a really, really good suggestion, Libby. And I think, you know, and I think it's a complex issue, so I do think it is the kind of issue that, you know, we would want to start on soon, and, you know, we would want the help of legal counsel, because that, that, that's one of the big hurdles, I think, to, you know, to considering this. So, yes.
Karen, if I, you know, the, the Board of Selectmen typically, in the June and July timeframe, sets goals, and, you know, understanding that, you know, just as part of that process, it, it seems to me that that's a really good opportunity to look at the totality of things that, that the board seeks to accomplish and make some decisions. I, I don't, I don't think it would be, so I, I would, you know, I, I would follow that process, because I think sometimes when we make sort of individual commitments, we, you know, the, the totality of everything is maybe more than, more than we can manage. But, you know, I would say that when the Board of Selectmen takes up its goals, typically in the June and July timeframe, those are publicly posted meetings. That process typically takes place over a couple of meetings, and we try to do a significant amount of outreach to understand from citizens where they want us to be focusing our time, and we appreciate any and all public input.
That, thanks, you're, you know, you're absolutely right. And, you know, I know that in the past, when we've set our goals, a number of those goals have been informed by, by people reaching out to the Board of Selectmen, and I think articulating areas of, you know, town government, governance, or policy where, where they see a need. And I, I would say one of them, one of them this past year was, was around climate change. And, you know, we, we eventually pulled together a task force that Tom Mayo is working with now, to work on, you know, goals for carbon neutrality. And frankly, that would not have happened since, absent people pushing for it. You know, it's, as Mary suggests, like, like all of us, right? I think there's the balance of the, the day-to-day mechanics of running $100 million-plus enterprise, and, and the overarching policy goals that we ought to have, and we ought to aspire to. And, you know, I think, I think a, a good year, you make some progress on, on both of those fronts. So, you know, I think to Libby's point, part of seeing this through, I think, would be, would be articulating those, the importance of this as a goal for the limited resources of the Board of Selectmen going forward. Okay. Further, further questions or comments from the public? I'm not seeing anybody. So I, I guess, too, I'd, I'd like to come back to Mary's point in the beginning, which was, you know, I, I think that, I think that this proclamation, we all took a lot of time reflecting on what we wanted to say and how we wanted to say it. And again, I, I think that it, it's part of the, it's part of our practice, when something important comes up, to be able to recognize that this is how we do it. I think we're, we are keeping with our practice in that regard. So I would ask for any questions or comments with respect to the, with respect to the proclamation that I read earlier? Not seeing any hands. Michelle or Mary, any final comments? Joe?
Yes, I think we've talked about the flag issue, and I think it's something that does need to be addressed. For me, an unanswered question is how the First Amendment impacts what we can do and how we do it. I do not want to open the Pandora's Box, that if we fly one flag, we then have to fly a neo-Nazi flag, or some other flag. I just want to make sure that we follow a procedure that we can recognize, the path that we follow as one where we can fly a flag, where the town can endorse it, without having the negative consequences of having to fly other flags. So that, to me, is the real concern, and I hope that we can address it in the coming year. With respect to the proclamation, I fully support it, and when it's time, I am prepared to make a motion to accept it.
Thanks, Joe. And that, that's a, that's a really good point. Mary, any further comments or questions?
I'd be ready to offer a motion if you'd be willing to accept it.
I think we have one more, one more unmute, and that's from Michelle Eyre. But, Michelle, I'm not seeing your name. Maybe, do we know, Michelle's, let's see?
I think I'm here.
Okay, there you go.
Can you hear me? Sorry, thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Sorry, I couldn't raise my hand. I just wanted to say very quickly, just on behalf of the school committee, I just wanted to say thank you for including your support of the work that the Hingham Public Schools and the faculty do to support the LGBTQ plus students in our district. I appreciate that you, the Board of Selectmen, took the time to include that support, because there's a lot of really good work that's being done at our schools, by our faculty, and I appreciate the fact that you acknowledge that for them. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate your comments. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I would accept a motion for the lesbian, gay, bi, trans, queer, or questioning plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation as follows: Whereas Hingham is a community that values diversity and inclusion, and is committed to equal rights and opportunities for all its residents; and whereas Hingham recognizes the important contributions of its LGBTQ plus residents to the town's history, culture, economy, and civic life; and whereas June 28, 2020 marks the 51st anniversary of the Stonewall riots, an event that gave rise to the beginning of the gay rights movement in the United States; and whereas June is now designated across the country and in the Commonwealth as Pride Month; and whereas we celebrate. as Pride Month, and whereas we celebrate the accomplishments of the LGBTQ+ community towards securing important rights and freedoms, often through struggle and adversity, and whereas we remain vigilant against continued oppression and discrimination against the LGBTQ+ community, and against any new political efforts to overturn these accomplishments, and whereas we affirm our support for our LGBTQ+ residents, including our students and our employees, vendors and visitors, and stand with them to protect their civil rights and ability to live openly without fear, and whereas we congratulate the members of the Hingham Pride Project for their efforts to increase LGBTQ+ visibility and to support LGBTQ+ citizens, particularly our LGBTQ+ youth, through the distribution of over 700 pride flags that are flying across Hingham, and whereas we acknowledge the important efforts of the Hingham School Committee, the School Department leadership, teachers and staff to support our LGBTQ+ students, and to help all students meet core educational competencies that prioritize social, emotional learning, health, and safety, and respect for others. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim June 2020 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, voted this fourth day of June 2020 by Karen A. Johnson, Mary M. Power, Joseph M. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Okay, well, I, I think it's an important step, and I must say, I do appreciate all of the conversation today, and I think very thoughtful comments that we will certainly take into consideration. Alyssa Porter, you have another question?
I just wanted to say thank you, and to say that it's over 1,000 now.
Oh, fantastic, well, my, sorry, my last statistic was 700, so we can, we can correct that in the, in the final proclamation. Fantastic.
Karen, this is Tom, I just wanted to ask, I assume you'd like us to post that on our website?
Yeah, with Alyssa's correction, yeah.
Absolutely, will do.
Tom, I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that you also please, you know, send it out in one of the Hingham News Alerts to people who sign up for the town emails, and could you please also forward it to the Hingham Journal and the Hingham Anchor? I'd like, I'd like to get it out to the press and get their assistance in getting it out to the public.
Will do, thank you, Mary.
Okay, and now we have some regular business that we need to attend to this afternoon in an executive session, and so I will state that the Board will enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation, because discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. The Board will not reconvene in open session. All those in favor of moving to executive session, say aye. Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye.